Council meeting to order, if you'll please rise our invocation and our pledge. It will be led by our city attorney, Mr. Tom Trask.
Heavenly Father, send down your blessing on this meeting of the city council. Give the council members a clear sense of duty and lead them to a faithful discharge of the same. Direct them in their deliberations at this meeting so that all things may be done to the glory of thy name and the welfare of the people of Oldsmar. Thus we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and once again, welcome. Our first item tonight is our citizens' open forum. It allows you to address the city council. We only have a couple of rules that you keep it to no more than five minutes. You state your name and address clearly for the record, and under our city attorney, we have one public hearing. If you're going to speak towards that, that is the rezoning. We ask that you hold those comments until we get to that item. Having said that, I'll start on the lighter side of the room. Anybody on this side like to address? Yeah?
My name is Gene Nordgren. I live on 1918 Sheffield Court. And my concern is on Sheffield Court, we have cul-de-sacs that, you know, come off of the main street. And all the water meters that feed the houses are located in the front two houses. So my water meter's on someone else's property. The concern I have is people parking on top of the meters because the pipes are plastic. We've called the city water department, and they say that there's no law against it. There's nothing they can do. And if the pipe breaks, I have to pay for a plumber to come to somebody else's property to fix the pipe, and I'm responsible for all the water lost. I checked around with, like, the city of Tampa. They have an ordinance that prohibits parking on top of the meters. My question is, can we get an ordinance like that to help protect us? And besides, they say that the, if the park and it breaks a city meter, they can't hold them responsible because there's no law against parking on top of the meters. And I have the ordinance for the city of Tampa that states that, the way that they ordered it.
Okay. If you'd like to give that to the city clerk, we can maybe look into that.
Is your meter on your land or on the...
No, it's on somebody else's, as he said.
No.
And if it breaks on your side of the meter, it's your responsibility, obviously.
Right. I have no control over who parks there, but I'm totally responsible for repairs. So it's a no-win situation unless we have an ordinance.
It could happen, but has it happened to you?
A few years back, it did. But fortunately, it was on the city's side, and they fixed it. But, I mean, prevention's probably the best...
Something we could take under consideration.
Yep. Thanks for bringing it to our attention. Anybody else on this side of the room? Anybody on this side of the room like to address the council? Awesome. We'll close the citizens' open forum. Mayor's Minute, I'll give you a little recap and then some upcoming events. One of the great things that we get to do is the monthly We Mean Business, the Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce, and the acting city manager and myself for July, we visited Bell's Department Store to find out how the construction's going on at the Woodlands Plaza. Stanfield Scott, who is a exporter of liquor and spirits, or wine and spirits to the Caribbean and Latin America, pretty interesting that it's here. And then we tried the new spin and slice pizza right there in the plaza where, which what's in there? Flamestone, the Flamestone Plaza.
And that was an official stop, I'm sure.
Yes, it was. Yeah. Well, it's a new business, so we try and meet them. Also, blood drive, thanks to our 10 donors who participated in the July 20th blood drive. Seven good units were collected, so 21 lives will be saved. Volunteers, thanks to Wells Fargo for volunteering with the city for a beautification project. They laid five pallets of sod in three and a half hours. That's pretty good. Upcoming events, congratulations to, well, first, I want to say this. I want to, hopefully, I speak on behalf of the council. I want to thank Bruce sincerely for participating. We're going to, of course, give you all the accolades for the years of service he had, but it's important to me that you participated in the city manager's search process. So I'm going to thank you for that. And also want to congratulate Al Braithwaite, who, Director of Administrative Services, for being selected as the next city manager for Oldsmar. I'm sure I speak for everyone at the DIAS in letting him know, so congratulations, Al. I didn't mean that. I think it's very important, and I hope I speak for everybody else, to have you involved with the process and kind of guide us on what we're looking for and what's important, and even what your vision was for moving forward once you retire. So thank you much for that. Oldsmar represented the BMX Worlds. That went city staff manned vendor tents in Rock Hill, South Carolina for the 2017 BMX World Championships. Great insight into the logistics and details in accommodating such an event here in the city of Oldsmar to bring this event to us. And we were greatly represented, and not only at the vendor tents, but I know we had some great meetings with a lot of the people that helped put that event on. And I wasn't going to ask you this, but how many people, well, just the numbers, how many countries and people were there roughly?
There were over 3,000 riders from 48 countries.
48 countries. So in reference, I think we're about 1,100 riders from 38 countries for the Gator Nationals, so...
It's been that high, yes.
Yeah, so that's great, and hopefully, we'd have, hope to have some of those events here. Purple Heart Recognition Day, everyone is invited to join the city of Dunedin for Purple Heart Recognition Day, Monday, August 6th, 6:30 at the Purple Heart Park on Main Street and, isn't it right there, Main Street and Alt.19? Yeah, okay, right there by the traffic light. Also, crime opportunities. Over 15 cars were burglarized this past weekend in Oldsmar. I asked the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office to step forward, and they can give us a little insight onto what happened and how we can do that. Deputy Sackey?
Good evening. Yes, there was a rash of burglaries. It's, there's a rash of burglaries throughout the county.
Car burglaries, yeah.
They came here, and probably the biggest thing is people leaving their cars unlocked. They leave their cars unlocked, they leave their purses in their cars, they leave guns in their cars, and these kids are, I think, I don't know the full statistics, but from, like, 15 to 21 is the biggest mix of these kids that are doing this. And they're just walking through neighborhoods, and they're just checking doors. If they unlock, they go in and they rifle through. They know to go to the glove box, look for the valet key, steal the car. So the biggest thing we can do as citizens is lock it. If you see anything suspicious, if you see a group of kids or two or three kids walking in a neighborhood that just isn't, doesn't feel right, then get as much information as you can, call us. You can stay anonymous. Don't want you to go out. Do everything for the safety of your home, let us do that. But give us a handle on it so that we can go up and we can, we can talk to them and see what's going on.
Try and maybe get, like, a description of the kids, what they're wearing, ages...
As much, as much information as possible. They're wearing this, they were, there was three of them, there was two males and a female, whatever you can, whatever, and sometimes you can't, sometimes it's dark.
Right.
And I don't, I'm not saying people need to go outside and snoop. In your house, you see it, call. And as you know, we're 24 hours, so 2:00 in the morning, we're awake.
Yep. And this isn't just, like, as you said, this isn't just isolated Oldsmar, it's going on all over the town.
No, they go from, they just, they bounce around communities. They hit Palm Harbor, they hit, in some cases, it's a group of kids that came up from St. Pete, but it's not always. Some kids are from Eastlake, some, I mean, it's just kids that...
Got nothing better to do.
Got nothing better to do.
So the 15 that were recently occurred, was it, like, primarily a certain part of Oldsmar, or was it all...
It was, um, excuse me, for, by National Orange.
Yeah.
I think it was, what's the...
Country Club?
Country Club. And they just, what they do is they, a lot of times, what they'll do, a guy, somebody will drive, doors will open, two, three kids hop out, the car drives slow, they're walking, and they're just checking doors. They get one, they rifle through it, get what they can, and move on. And there's not a lot of, from the movies where the burglar goes and breaks the lock and is real careful and whatnot, it's just open doors.
Yeah, because the odds are probably somewhat in their favor that they're going to hit two or three out of 10, probably, maybe, so...
And if it's locked, it's not worth their trouble, and they move on.
You know, this is, this has been going on for years and years and years, and people still will not lock their cars.
Yeah.
I don't get it.
Well, and we were talking about this this morning, too. One of the other things that they try and get in is, they get in there and get your remote for your garage door, and then they'll come back later when you're not at home and rob your house, so...
Yes.
Or at least get stuff out of your garage or whatever they can get, so...
Is there anything we can put on the, on the website on there?
Yeah, we'll get that out.
Yeah, we were talking to Deputy Cacolo this morning to see what we can do to push it out that way.
I think she's working to get some trailers that put message boards up for Tampa Road and whatnot, just to remind people. But the biggest thing is breaking bad habits.
Yeah.
Lock your cars. Lock your cars in your garage, or at least take, don't leave your purse in the garage with the car.
Yeah, I don't do that.
Because if they do get the garage door open to go in there, well, there you go. They got your purse, they might get your car. And so many times, I mean, I'm a gun owner, obviously, and my guns are in the house or they're on me. I don't leave them in the car.
Yeah.
Especially not unlock car, because I don't want that to be used to hurt, harm anyone.
Sure. That makes sense. Yeah, I can't tell you how many times I've woken up at 2:00 and gone, did I lock my car? And of course, I traipse out there, and I did, you know, but, you know, you definitely need to do it. But thank you, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
That concludes, excuse me, our mayor's minute. Next item is the consent docket. We have a couple of items, which is approve the minutes of May 2nd, 2017. City will, the city council meeting approved the ranking and authorization that authorized the city manager to negotiate contract for RFQ 2017-02, Design Services for Douglas Road Trail. Third item, approve the tentative agenda for August 15th, 2017. If nobody wishes to pull anything, I need a motion.
A move?
A second.
Second.
Motion and a second. I know at least one of the applicants here is for item two. I don't know if anybody has any questions. If not...
For item two?
That's the Douglas Road.
RFQ.
If you have a question, we can pull it and discuss it.
Unless he has a question, I, I, no.
No. You're good, everybody's good? Okay. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0, thank you. City of Oldsmar is, first item is consider the following reappointments to the planning board. Shawn Osborne, member and chair, Nicole McBride, alternate member. And this wasn't one of the ones that you, which one is it?
Shawn.
Shawn, okay. So Shawn has actually withdrawn, not for any other reason other than relocating, I think. He just found out that he's relocating, so it's really only Nicole McBride as, would she now be an alternate or no?
She'll, you'll have to accept his resignation formally first, and then she'll move on.
He can be a member.
Okay, all right. Okay, sounds good. All those in favor?
He's here tonight.
Oh, sorry. Oh, Nicole's here? Come on up. Well, maybe we'll interview you right here.
Good.
Okay.
Hi, Nicole.
Hi.
Yeah, so we, this came up this afternoon that Shawn was going to withdraw from the board, so I'm sure they're going to talk to you, but would that be something you would be interested in doing?
Yes, I told Kathy earlier today, yes.
Oh, you got ahead of us, nice. Good deal. Any questions?
No, thank you, Nicole.
Good, your work.
You're all gone.
Thank you, thank you for coming tonight.
Appreciate it.
Did they tell you about the part where you have to sing? It's an initiation.
Especially when you go from alternate...
I've already sung and danced, so, thank you.
Not alternates, but when you, when you come to become a full member, we would like some kind of a...
You'll have to come back at that time.
I'll practice.
To have one prop is all.
All right. I'll work on it, thank you.
Thank you. Need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Kathy's choice tonight.
Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you.
You, have a good night.
Thank you. I don't know about this next one. We have a motion to skip number five? No. The next item is consider the appointment of Freya Stefan as the teen member of the planning board. Come on up. We have lots of questions.
Okay.
How are you?
You definitely have to sing.
I'm good, how are you?
I'm good.
It's good.
Just so those that know, this is the daughter of our city clerk, Ann Nixon. So, look at her, she's all...
And she has a lot of questions for you.
And we, we won't share them in public, but we love the stories that you tell about your mom, so, but she tells us, so, the thing, the funny things that you say, so, anyway, we love having the teens on our boards, so we really appreciate you wanting to do that, so...
Has your mom told you about the sunshine law? Have you studied that?
Uh-oh.
There will be a test.
When your mom asks you a really difficult question, Al, you can just say, "Mom."
Can't talk about it.
Can't talk about it, sunshine law.
Even if it really has nothing to do with anything with the city. He starts to talk to you about your room, "Mom, sunshine law, we can't talk about it."
I have documents.
Yeah. I talk to the city attorney, that's what I tell him, so... Anyway, go ahead, a motion and a second. Motion?
So moved.
Second, motion and a second. Any other questions? Thanks for volunteering to do this, too. We have a really good dinner at the end of the year, too. You'll really like it. Motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, 5-0, thanks.
Thank you.
Next item is the presentation of hurricane preparedness by Chief O'Neal. Chief?
Mayor and council, just quickly, just an update on our hurricane preparedness. So we're entering the two-business month. Traditionally, the Atlantic hurricane season, especially for the city of Oldsmar, yesterday morning, within an hour and a half span, we went from tropical depression to a tropical storm watch to tropical storm warning. And so you can see that this is something we always look for and work for as far, as far as a plan. Now, you know that we don't do this in a vacuum. We do this as a group of planners throughout Pinellas County with not only Pinellas County, the sheriff's office in Oldsmar, and the sheriff's office in Tico. So our sequence of events, what normally happens with us, we have an approaching storm, we have a meeting with the Response Operations Coordinating Group, which is the ROD group, where we get together and determine what our course of action may be. At that time, the board accounting commissioner declares an emergency, and then we activate the County Emergency Operations Center, the City Operation, Emergency Operations Center, the fire station shortly thereafter, and then we work on our emergency operations plan, and it's activated as well. Our focus this year is, we always do, we review and evaluate our emergency operations plan. This year, our focus primarily has been the change to the evacuation zones. Big change this year that came out, actually, June 1st, not the FEMA flood zones, but the actual evacuation zones. And I'll show you some numbers here in just a minute. We spent a lot of time looking at the changes to Level A and B specifically for the evacuation tasks. It doesn't really affect us as far as how we plan our tasking. It takes us about four hours to evacuate, or it takes us about four hours to knock on all the residents' doors in the city of Oldsmar when we do our evacuations. We have it broken down to about 36 different tasks. The other focus for 2017 is our new personnel training. And that's not necessarily new personnel in the city, but it's people who are now in different positions in the emergency operation chart. Operations section leads, planning section leads, and our deputies as well. So I want to show you a pretty important figures here. Those are evacuation changes. You can see the zones, the mobile home zones, A, B, and C, and the differences between 2016 and 2017. We actually had two less mobile homes in the evacuation zones this year, but I want to call attention to Group A or Zone A. There are now 747 more homes affected by the changes in the evacuations this year. For instance, last year, really no change if you lived on, like, Shore Drive Place, you were in a Level A. But last year, if you lived on, say, the 200 block of Shore Drive East or Pine Street, you were in a Level B. Now you're in a Level A. Last year, if you were on Split Fork, or if you were on Bay Harbor Boulevard, or maybe in the 100 block of Buckingham Avenue, you were in a C, now you're in a B. So some significant changes to those areas, and you can see how that affects everybody. So those numbers have gone up, and we've changed our tasking accordingly. So that's what our focus was this year. These numbers and the changes to our evacuation maps and our tasking, I couldn't have done this, and actually, the bulk of this work was done by Wes Hernandez and Mike Hurley, our JIS specialist, who really whizzes with that information. Also, our Code Red, our special needs, and our Know Your Zone, all of these informations are preparedness links that you can find on the websites, along with the storm surge predictors. They're on the disaster website as well as the fire department website. So the message really I want to get out tonight is for all the citizens to go to the Pinellas County website or to the city website and look at those links. And the most important thing they can do is, again, like we tell the first of each year, is to look at the Know Your Zone, put your address in there, it will tell you what your evacuation zone is. And in the event that you are planning on to a shelter, it will tell you what the closest shelter is as well. Do you have any questions?
I don't know if anybody else does, go ahead.
I had a question. I was just curious, why was there such a change this year in the evacuation zone?
They reshot the elevations, and they do that every several, every few years, and some of the changes to those elevations show that with the coastal flooding, that they thought the surge from, the model showed the surges would be higher and that those would affect those areas more.
What we have here in the city of Oldsmar, I'm in, I'm in A now. I was in B. No, I'm in a, yeah, I was in B, now I'm in A. Well, the difference between the A and the B is about 25 feet.
I thought you were always in A.
Yeah, I would have thought so.
Oh, we were in B.
Yeah.
Wow.
I have seen hurricanes that had went where my house is now, that went further north than where my house is now. If you don't think Oldsmar is going to get a hurricane someday, in 1920, it ended up across Tampa Road, that hurricane ended up across Tampa Road. A hurricane can devastate this city.
So Dean, Eastlake Oaks, they, we had the bond that was just paid off, being paid off this year, and we dug out those ponds and raised all that property. I've been in the C, you're saying that now I'm in a B?
Yes, sir.
Interesting.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but evacuation is different than flood zone?
It is, and I really can't speak on what the FEMA flood zones are. I'd let Marie do that.
But that's, that's different. This is about evacuation and being able to...
Exactly.
I do think those changed, too, didn't they?
Some of them did.
Now I'm like, A++ flood.
You're an A+. Yes. Your house is.
You were always underwater.
I hate it. I'll come back and I have all these hurricanes, spend all the money on the hurricane windows and roll downs, and I always joke that when I come back after a storm, that glass, none of it will be broken, but the rest of the house will be gone.
If we have a big hurricane, you're in trouble, anyway.
I'm a goner.
Yeah, yeah.
Take a picture of my wife, Evan.
I have a quick question. It kind of gets back to the conversation we had this morning at the clerk's office, and it's kind of a combination of questions between you and the clerk's office, but we were talking about sandbags and how you were communicating with the county, and how do we notify people that if, in fact, we have done it and where they can get them? Do we, do we socially media or reverse, reverse phone calls?
That's a good point, because yesterday morning, Nan Bennett and I had a conversation, because initially, when this first came out, the track was on, we really weren't sure about the track. So the first thing we looked to do is, is this something we're going to do, are we going to set up a sandbag site, and we're going to use one site or we're going to use two? So we originally first wanted to see what we had on hand as far as materials and sand, and then we talked to Deb, saying, "We're going to give you a message as soon as we hear from the county." Initially, we were going to stand up a sandbag site. The county had not released any information yet until they had a better track from the National Weather Service. Once they looked at the track was going a little bit farther south, and that we'd actually checked, and we'd not received any calls for anybody asking about sandbags, and only one other municipality and the county had opened two sites up, and we decided not to.
Okay, and how do we...
We have a method for getting that information out.
That through the Code Red thing or something?
We do.
Okay.
And I did mention the Code Red on there as far as our preparedness links, and we actually are in the process of moving to a different system. We're kind of in a transition with a state system that is a little bit more robust, so we'll have a different mass notification system come out in the next few, few months, but it'll, it'll bridge between the two, so we'll still have some way of notifying people in the event.
And so the people that are in the Code Red database will roll over into the new one?
It will.
Okay. Perfect. Any other questions? No, thanks, Dean.
I have a comment for him. This is to tell all your guys, thank you for their dedication to saving lives. Oldsmar, when that little tiny car took the, the light pole down, the light, the power line down on, on South Placetec Road Sunday morning, we were going to church early that morning, and, and they were still out there, BSO and, and two big records. And how anybody lived through that is amazing, and it took y'all, you were the first ones out there, right?
No, we were second. It was a, we had a pretty extensive extrication operation. We were requested by Hillsborough County, who was looking for another advanced life support unit, a single vehicle that wrapped around a telephone pole, and because of the way the person was entrapped, they needed some extra people. So we were the second unit to come in with some extrication equipment and detail to our operation just to get the person out of the vehicle. And I found out about it, again, Monday morning, first thing. Nice email from the battalion chief from Hillsborough County telling me what a great job our crews did, which is a great way to start a Monday morning.
Yeah.
Your guys did a great job, and how anybody could have lived through that is amazing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dean. Next is our city attorney.
Yes, I have one item tonight. It's the first reading of public hearing of ordinance 2017-10, rezoning a vacant lot east of the library from residential single-family district R2 to Town Center Commercial Neighborhood, TCCN. I'll go ahead and I'll read that ordinance by title only. Ordinance 2017-10, an ordinance of the city of Oldsmar, Florida, rezoning certain real property described as vacant land, generally consisting of .92 acres with a parcel identification number of 23281663936090010, from residential single-family R2 to Town Center Commercial Neighborhood, TCCN, and providing for an effective date. That was the first reading of ordinance 2017-10 by title only. It is a Snyder hearing, and before I need to have anyone that's going to speak on this issue, if you can stand up, please, raise your right hand and be sworn under oath. Anyone's going to speak at all. You swear the testimony you're about to give is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. And in this particular ordinance, the city is both going to present for staff, and the city is also the applicant. So Marie is going to do that for us.
Okay, Marie Daphne, Planning and Redevelopment Director. This is a rezoning request from R2 Residential Single Family to TCCN Town Center Commercial Neighborhood. It's city-owned property, it's approximately .92 acres, it's at the center of a block It's at the center of a block bounded by St. Petri Drive, State Street, Dartmouth Avenue, and Arlington Avenue. It's east of the library site. And this gives you an idea of the surrounding zoning. In outlined in red is city-owned property in addition to the subject property, which is outlined in yellow. To the south and east is R2, single-family, and the balance with the city-owned property is TCCN. So the R2 permits, single-family homes. The TCCN permits retail office, civic uses, mixed use, four stories up to 55 feet, ISR of .80 and FAR of .1. And there's architectural standards in the TCCN. So this was reviewed against the standards outlined in section 5.1, excuse me. 3.15.3 of the Land Development Code. And based on that review, staff has recommended approval of the rezoning from R2 residential, single-family to TCCN Town Center Commercial Neighborhood. And the planning board would recommend an approval at their meeting 4:0. I'd like to enter the staff report into the record and answer any questions you may ask.
Thank you. I have one question, but I'll wait. Anybody have a question?
This is just to make it all consistent.
Yeah, this has really nothing to do with what any development that will go on there.
No, it primarily is city-owned property and we own balances TCCN. And we want to include this city-owned property that's R2 in that development.
And for our, I think our previous meeting, it was discussed, and I think our city manager brought it up, that regardless of what would ever go in there, this makes sense to do this so we don't have an isolated pocket sitting out there. Is that?
Yeah, Andy.
Go ahead. I think the whole, well, it's almost seven acres. It should all have the same zoning designation. It's all under the same ownership.
Right.
And to have this one corner that's less than an acre, a different zoning designation.
Doesn't make sense.
There's no logic to it, I can see.
Yep. Any other questions?
No.
Nope, thank you.
No.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Dave, would you like to speak towards counsel?
Dave Tilke, 505 Arlington Avenue East. I have a couple of questions, and I know this isn't a back and forth dialogue type thing. So I'll just get through my questions.
Actually, we can have dialogue a little bit because it is a public hearing.
I'll kind of lump all my questions together. One of the questions I had, and I brought it up at the last hearing, or yeah. Can the city council actually apply a town center code to a piece of property that does not exist within the town center? This land is outside the limits of the town center. And I'm wondering why we would not be applying citywide codes, zoning uses, to this piece of property? How can we put a TC zoning on property that's not TC? A kind of a question that goes with that. If in fact this changes, will the boundaries of the town center and the CRA be modified to bring this piece of property into the town center? Because there's also the incremental tax issues. I think, you know, the CRA has that incremental tax where there's a formula and monies can be put back into the district. Well, this piece of property is not in that district, but yet it'll have the zoning for that. And if it is changed, I ask the question, well, we have architectural guidelines for the town center. Although you're going to put a town center designation of TCCN on this piece of property, how can you apply architectural standards that apply to the town center to land that's outside of the town center? So I think those questions all kind of wrap around one issue. Again, like I said at the last meeting, this parcel, this area down there is unique in relations to the town center. All the rest of the town center has buffers around it. Although there's old R2, before the town center was formed, a lot of the downtown area was R2. And that was all incorporated in. So currently, the buffer around the current town center with all the commercial, retail type districting that everybody wants to do is either a street or R3 properties that are developed more densely. This is the only area that abuts R2 zoning, this piece of property, this section of the town center. Again, as I said at the last meeting, once you make this change, it's done. You saw the intense use that can go on this piece of property. It could be 40 feet high. It could be, I think the setback is only 10 feet from the property line. And there's homes, R2 homes, right there. If this piece of property where they're left is R2, and if a developer comes in and wants to incorporate it in the bigger parcel, I ask, you know, I wonder, can variances be granted? Or can things like that be done? Or can the zoning be just an R3, something with a residential-only component? And a component that does not allow any commercial or any retail? Because y'all may be entertaining a development agreement down there that says, yeah, that's only going to be some duplexes down there at the south end. However, that's not cast in stone. There's no telling if that goes away 10 years from now. Somebody, a different council's sitting here, there's a different planning board, a different developer comes in and says, wow, let's make this whole thing a retail district. Let's go all the way down the south property line with four-story buildings and, you know, bars or restaurants that are open till 2:00 AM. The zoning would allow that. So I only ask that we look to protect the neighborhoods that abut the town center, that we understand the uniqueness here, and we don't allow commercial retail development to butt up against the R2 like this change would allow.
Thank you.
Just for the record, Dave, the planning board voted four to nothing. You're on the planning board. You were not at that meeting, just for the record. Is that correct?
I am not on the planning.
Oh, you're not?
I was on the planning board when the town center was.
I must have misheard at the previous meeting. Thank you. Bruce, Marie, would you like to address any of those items?
The first question, whether you can designate property outside the CRA, you know, Town Center Commercial Neighborhood. Yes, you can. There's nothing special about that designation. That's all it is, is a designation. It's the underlying land use that really derives the intensity of the development. So it would be 10 units per acre, residential urban, as opposed to 15 units per acre if it was in the CRA. And then just to verify, I spoke with Forward Pinellas, and they concurred with our proposal to have this one lot. But it's only, you know, .92 acres. It's not like you can do a lot of intense development on .92. It would have to be folded into the rest of the property. So I can see that more even transitioning. And we can, you know, there's going to be the development agreement. We're not really talking about that now. But there would be a development agreement for the proposal that would limit some of the development.
Well, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Bruce, but that would apply to any development that went onto that property, be it the one that's on the table now or anyone, there would be a development agreement.
I think it's important to recognize what the neighbors, what is neighboring this property and any future plans or what might be built there. You know, it's important to recognize what's next to it. I think there's actually only two lots that abut this subject property. They are single-family homes, but there's only two lots that even abut it.
And I don't remember the specific logistics of how it happened. But I think a similar case was Tuscany Woods, where we owned the property and we did some zoning changes incorrect? Because I think what could have happened there was they could have wound up with a gas station or a four-story office building or, I don't know if I have the history of it correct. But in short, that's, I mean, we kind of helped dictate what goes into that property, which is why we buy it, so.
And as far as the architectural standards, I believe that this parcel will have to meet the architectural standards of the TCCN, similar to Park Avenue Plaza. That's, you know, it's part in the CRA and part outside. So we require the whole development to meet the architectural standards. So I don't think that's really an issue.
And are there, is that the, those two homes, if it was two, are those the only ones that abut what would be TCCN now if it's changed?
These.
The R2?
There's one else in the.
Is there, I couldn't, I can't remember the drawing. I don't know if Adam has a way to get that drawing back. Do you have that, Adam, or no, if it's too difficult? I don't recall. I know the DOT pond is there, I think, and I can't.
The one's further east abut the DOT property.
The one you're talking about?
Yeah, I couldn't remember at all.
It's the DOT pond and R2.
There already abut the library parking lot.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
That's right.
And we recognized that when, you know, they constructed the library site and the parking area. And we worked with the neighbors as far as the fencing and the lighting along that area.
Yeah, so what kind of, I mean, maybe this comes with a development agreement, but what kind of landscape buffering do we require if it were TCCN budding up to R2? Because I think that would probably be what would be really important in that development agreement.
Well, that could be part of the discussion during the development.
Okay.
Okay.
Bruce, that lot next to School Street that abuts this piece of property, is that, is that the piece that was donated to the city?
It is. So actually, there's only one lot that abuts this subject property.
Right, because we own that lot.
That's right.
And we own that lot.
And nothing will be built there. Can't be.
And that's not included in this request.
Okay. All right. Any other questions while we got the map up?
Thank you, Marie.
Thank you, thank you, Adam, for bringing that up. We only swore in two people, correct?
That's right.
I need a motion.
So moved.
In a second. Any discussion on this from the board, from the council?
No, I think, you know, as it relates to the citizens and what goes in over there, that's going to be a heavy discussion, of course, when there's something in front of us to discuss. So I think it makes sense.
Okay.
But like Marie said, it's only, what, .92 acres? So it's not a big piece of property.
Well, yeah. Do you have anything?
Good.
Gary? Good. Motion in a second. This is a public hearing. Can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Seidel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saraki?
Yes.
Councilmember McGee?
Yes.
Councilmember Beaverton?
Yes.
Mayor Beavis?
Hi.
First reading of ordinance 2017-10, rezoning vacant lot east of library from residential, single-family district to town center, commercial neighborhood passes with 504 and zero against.
And the second reading will be at our next meeting, correct?
I'm not sure when it's scheduled at this point.
Okay.
It'll probably come back.
Yes, it's on for second reading, August 15th.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
That's all.
Thank you. Thank you. City manager.
Thank you. Mayor and council item eight, presentation of financial analysis on expansion of reclaimed water in the Harbor Palms and Country Club subdivisions. The analysis was performed by Public Resources Management Group, who also does our utility rate work. And with us this evening is Henry Thomas to make this presentation to council.
Welcome, Henry.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, as Bruce said, my name is Henry Thomas. The firm I work with is Public Resources Management Group. We have worked with the city. We've had the pleasure working for the city for a number of years. I think when I first started, I didn't have any gray hair. And Mr. Haddock probably wasn't counting his days until retirement.
I didn't have any gray hair back then either, did I, Henry?
No, I don't think so. It's been a while. So we were asked by staff to do a little third-party review and financial evaluation. And I need to make sure I know how to work this.
I think you're aiming it towards. There you go.
Financial evaluation of providing reclaimed services to two neighborhoods, Country Club Estates and Harbor Palms. The project would actually require the retrofit into these neighborhoods because they're already developed neighborhoods. So typically, when we look across the state and reclaimed water programs, these are often very difficult to accomplish in a cost-effective manner. And I think that's why the staff had asked us to look at this so you can, as you look at this capital project in your plan, look at what the economics of the project would entail. So we did two analyses. One is a payback analysis where we looked at the net revenues that would be generated from the reclaimed project compared to the investment. And then how many years would it take to recoup the initial investment based on those net revenues? And I think more importantly, we did another analysis to look at the net operating income from the project. In other words, what's the annual cash flow? And what that might do to the overall water and wastewater reclaim system in terms of annual impacts? Because this is a retrofit project, and, you know, we're talking about neighborhoods that have had potable water for a number of years. The other part of this is, we made assumptions about this in order to calculate these paybacks and net income figures. And I would like to say that, you know, we don't have a perfect knowledge of what might happen. So the other thing we did, in addition to making some generalized assumptions based on the best information we had, we also did some sensitivity analysis. So we varied some of those assumptions to see how much those assumptions would influence the outcome in terms of the overall financial evaluation. So one observation right off the bat, and we were able to get detailed billing data for the neighborhoods. And in the case of Country Palms, there's currently 97 potable water customers. They use an average of about 4,116 gallons per month of potable water. Harbor Palms is quite a bit larger, 483 customers. They use an average of 3,820 gallons per month. Now, I think the reason this is important is that this kind of usage really is more consistent with indoor, essential indoor use, and doesn't reflect the fact that the neighborhoods are doing a lot of irrigation today using your potable water system. Of course, we have prices and signals in place to try to discourage potable water use for long watering. But that being said, we, you know, if we look around the community, you're going to find that there are neighborhoods that are using considerably more. So these are fairly low water users to begin with. In order to look at what might occur if you build the projects, we did have one good example to draw upon that was retrofitted in the recent past, and that's the Forest Lakes project. Now, Forest Lakes uses an average of 8,200 gallons per month for reclaimed water. Now, I want to point out that that is based upon the customers who are actually participating in the program. So in Forest Lakes, we've only got 42% of the customers in Forest Lakes actually have a meter and participate in the program. The other 58% pay a $4.02 a month base charge because the service is available. Those customers within Forest Lakes that participate pay $7.60 a month for the first 8,000 gallons. And then there's a price of 95 cents per thousand for use over that. So again, 8,200 gallons, right, on average, right above the minimum that's included in the minimum bill. And again, 42% participation. So because we didn't want to, again, over-assume based on this other neighborhood, we also ran a much more optimistic alternative where we use 15,000 gallons a month. Obviously, when you're able to provide reasonably cost reclaimed water, some people may choose to irrigate even though they haven't been irrigating in the past. So we wanted to look at that. Now, the total costs, I lost it. It's not on my screen. The total cost of the project is $2,425,000. That's $325,000 in Country Palm and 2.1 million in Harbor Palms. Again, our basic case was to assume a 42% participation rate based on the experience in Forest Lakes. We also ran the numbers at both of the usage levels at 75% participation rate. And said, okay, if we get a lot more people participating and we have the 8,000 gallons roughly of use per month, what does that look like? If we have 15,000, what does that look like? For those that don't participate within these neighborhoods, we have assumed that they would consistently, your rate ordinance, pay that $4.02 availability charge. So some of the recoupment of the project is those base charges for people that don't participate. Again, what that, what your rate structure does is when we look at the paybacks and the economic analysis, there's not a tremendous difference between the assumptions because you are getting that base $4.02 from everyone that doesn't participate as well. If they're using 8,000 gallons or less to irrigate their lungs, they're only paying 7.60. So there's not a big increase in revenues if they decide to participate and use water in a limited fashion. So basically, in looking at the payback analysis, we did not include the cost of interest to finance the program. Again, assuming that you may finance it out of reserves, and we wanted to be very conservative here. And we looked at the payback under the two usage alternatives at the 42% participation. So for Country Palm, it would take 37 years to recoup your investment. For Harbor Palms, Country Club, for Harbor Palms, 49 years. With the higher use, it does shorten that payback, but it's still, Country Palms would be 31 years, and Harbor Palms would be 40 years. On a combined basis, the two alternatives are 47 and 39 years respectively. So basically, the paybacks here, quite frankly, extend beyond any term that you would finance the projects for, but also probably extend under the worst-case assumptions beyond the service life of the facilities perhaps. Now, the lines may last more than 40 years, but 40 years is a good way to look at the service life of these lines. So that's something to be considerate of. When we did the net operating return, or rate of return of net operating income, we made, again, some conservative assumptions about what that net income would be. So essentially, this is wastewater affluent that's highly treated and delivered to the neighborhoods. So we've assumed that the operating expense would only increase approximately 5 cents per thousand gallons for the electricity to pump the water to the neighborhoods. The debt service, we did assume a 20-year term at 4% interest for this one because this one, rather than payback, is looking at cash flow. So we did calculate a financing cost. And we did reflect the fact, and it was a very minor assumption, that you also, to those customers that are already doing some irrigation, you're going to lose the potable water revenue and replace it with lower reclaimed revenue. So again, that's not meant to make a judgment, but it's meant to get the overall financial impact because, again, we're going to see, and it was very minor. And we were able to ascertain from the billing data that there were a few homes in the neighborhoods, even though they have very low indoor, indoor levels of use, approximate indoor levels of use. There were some homes that were doing some irrigation. So this chart, and I just gave you the highlights on it, but it basically lays out the two alternatives. It shows Country Club and Harbor Palms. And it shows the net operating incomes on a total basis. For example, the two projects, there would be a $129,000 deficiency annually so that your total costs, including the financing costs and some minimal operating costs, would result in a negative income of about $129,000. Again, 47-year payback. And then with the more robust usage assumptions, the loss is about $119,000 for the combined systems with a 39-year payback. If we move the participation rate up, again, rather than paying only 402, now the customer pays a minimum bill of 7.60, but they also get 8,000 gallons of reclaimed water within that. But they also get 8,000 gallons of reclaimed water within that $7.60. So if we look at those numbers, and again, I'm going to refer to the combined projects because there's just a lot of numbers on this table. They're pretty straightforward. And I know you've had this packet, so feel free to ask me any details. But on a combined basis, for Alternative 1 usage levels with a 75% participation, again, there's a negative annual income of about $113,000. And then with the higher use, it drops to about $94,000. Again, the paybacks under the 75% participation are 34 years for the lower-use alternative and 27 years for the higher use. So of the alternatives we ran in combination between usage levels and participation rates, this alternative, on page eight, this Alternative 2, with a 75% participation rate, produces the best outcome for the city. So based on this, again, we just make some general observations and conclusions for you. I know you're going to make decisions about your capital planning. And this gives you at least some economic basis and financial analysis to consider. That, one, the project payback is expected to extend beyond the financing term and beyond the estimated service life of the assets in general. A negative annual operating income is estimated. And based upon the more likely outcome probably, which is the lower participation rate and the lower usage rate, which is inconsistent with Forest Lakes, you would be looking at a negative $129,000 annually. And again, that would have an implication, all other things being equal, on the water and wastewater system. So when we looked at these projects and tried to put them in context of your water and wastewater system you have today, the average investment that you're, the $2,425,000 you're investing is going to cost about $10,000 per customer to provide them reclaimed. If we look at your whole system, if we go in and look and take your financial statements and look at what you've invested in the water and sewer system to date, your average investment is $3,000 per customer. So that just sort of puts it in perspective how difficult it is to do these retrofit projects and make them economically viable. Now, if the Water Management District is forcing you into this, which some communities have found themselves in that situation because of their very high water use, and you have neighborhoods that are using, on average, 20,000 gallons, like folks in Citrus County and maybe Oviedo, Florida, where they have very high use and high-dollar homes, those paybacks will look a lot better. But in this situation, I don't think that's the case. And at least, there's been a few, I guess cautionary tales, clients that I've worked with that have brought reclaimed as a retrofit into neighborhoods that didn't use water to irrigate their lawns to begin with. And it really didn't work out because people that weren't already watering their yards didn't even want to pay $7.60 a month to be able to water them now. So I think you've got to, at least if you're looking at the financial implications, be very careful when you do these retrofits. If you decided that you wanted to do it, all other things being equal, to get you back whole on the rate path and the funding that we've got built into the current rates, it would require about another 2% increase in water and wastewater rates to be able to offset the loss of the reclaimed project on an annual cash flow basis. I mean, you don't have a real large water and wastewater system. So that $129,000 is, you know, somewhat significant on a percentage basis. So that's what I have formally. And I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you have.
Yeah, I have a couple.
I have a couple.
I'll fall to you. Go ahead, Councilmember Beaverland.
First of all, general observations can be very, very, very misleading. You know that?
Certainly.
Okay. And assumptions are also extremely dangerous. You have used those words throughout this whole presentation. I know a guy that assumed that he was going to conquer Europe. And his assumptions cost billions and millions of lives. And that was the guy that was running Germany. But that's overstated. I understand that. But we're talking here in the city of Osmar. And the assumptions are still that dangerous. And so is the observations. Throughout this whole thing, it seemed to me that, maybe I'm wrong, but it didn't seem like a very good idea. If you're going to do something, maybe we should have done this years ago, which I probably would have voted against it years ago, that if you're going to put in a system that everybody should pay for it, and that way, I pay $7.00 or something for my, then everybody should pay $7.00 or something, whether they have a sprinkler system or not. But you have to understand that for them to go on the system, it's a lot more than $7.00 and whatever I pay every month. You have to have a sprinkler system. And that's expensive to put that in. And a lot of people, I've known many times when I couldn't afford to pay the water bill, let alone they put in a sprinkler system. So what have I said? I've assumed something, and I'm totally confused.
So am I. I'm trying to understand where you're going with that, Jerry.
Well, you think about it for a minute, and we'll go to Councilmember McGee then.
I have nothing except for I think what Jerry was trying to say is it seems like a very financially unviable project at this point in time.
Absolutely.
Okay. That's how I interpreted that.
Assumptions are not. Member Seidel.
Well, anything that's going to cost us $1.3 million a year, or $1.3 million every 10 years, and has a life, a tail like this for recovery, is a bad investment. I mean, just honesty. It doesn't work.
Yes.
I mean, the numbers are the numbers. I would say this, because I was thinking about this after going over this information. Maybe there's some other thing, other things we do. Because obviously, this type of scenario is going to occur in other neighborhoods too, I bet, right? Where we don't offer reclaimed water hookup. And maybe the thing to do is to approach it a little differently with some other type of opportunity for them. For example, you know, they have these gray water recycling systems that are meant for individual homes. And what they do is they, if you're not familiar with them, they capture bath water, shower water, dish or laundry washing machine water, and they also capture rainwater. And for those who really want to participate in a recycling program, there's an opportunity for, and it hooks up to their current plumbing. It costs about $1,000 to do, right? Maybe the alternative to those parts of the community that it's not financially viable for us to draw and run and retrofit a line in there, maybe we offer up a grant program on an annual basis. And just see, you know, we put up so much money, make it available to everyone, they apply for it, and we'll maybe fund more next year. And it's an opportunity for people who want an alternative to irrigation as well as it's us meeting our goals of sustainability and using less potable water. Maybe that's more of a viable approach in those communities, you know? But it offers up some path for everybody to get there. And maybe we even make that part of the utilities department so it could fall into an enterprise fund to fund. So it's financed a little different, but it's just a thought. I mean, my initial thoughts on this is, you know, it's disappointing to see these numbers.
If I'm understanding exactly what you were saying, because I don't know that system, I'd be even more confused now than I was.
And I think you make some interesting points. Definitely something to consider. I don't, when you say a fund, it wouldn't necessarily generate any revenue.
No, no, it would be, I mean, potentially it could. You could set it up where it's, you know, it's a grant that you pay back, not a, you know, on your water bill over time. I'm just throwing out an idea. There's alternatives for $1,000 a home for the people who want it. It's a way to spot offer it without dropping lines and spending millions of dollars and having it run at a loss every year for...
Forty-seven years.
Right. It's just an alternative. Does that make sense, Jerry?
If you say so, I'm all with you.
It's just a thought.
Yeah. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. It was about, I don't know, 2001. I just bought my property on Oakleaf, and Don Boer came knocking on my door. At that time, I think he was the Vice Mayor. I'm not really sure. But he welcomed me to the neighborhood. And he was an advocate for putting reclaimed water in that Harbor Palms neighborhood. And he explained to me that when that neighborhood was built, even before the HOA went to funk, the homes on Oakleaf all had sprinkler systems. My current home has a full sprinkler systems for both units. Some of the homes took out the pipes. Why, I don't know. But after reviewing all of this information, and by the way, your presentation was excellent. It was fantastic. I read this the other night with you explaining it. I don't think this is a good way to spend our taxpayers' money for East Lake Oaks, especially the condition of those homes, what we're going to be doing with the new water lines and the sewer system. I don't think this is just a good way to spend our tax dollars from the citizens of Osmar. I don't think it's a good investment. And I talked to Bruce about it this morning. I said, Bruce, can you just hook me up? And he said, no. But I use freshwater, you know, the water on my property in the fall time because there's a drought. And my water bill will go up to $125, $150 because I water my yard. I want to have my yard looking nice. But unfortunately, now I don't need it. But I don't think it's a good investment for the city.
Dan, you said something about somebody coming to your door in 2001.
Yeah, Don Boer came over to my house.
And what did they say?
He was an advocate for reclaimed water.
Oh, yeah, he always was.
He was, he talked about putting reclaimed water in there.
What about pipes? Did you say there were some houses that had pipes?
Yeah, some of the, like, my house had a sprinkler system. The other home I own had a sprinkler system. The previous owner ripped it out. The gentleman next door, he has a sprinkler system. And the houses down by Azalea, they have the pipes sprinkler system.
Which anybody could do if they wanted to.
So they have an irrigation system, not the pipes they set up for the reclaim.
They didn't have reclaimed water.
Right.
No, it's all hooked to the potable.
No, they didn't have, we don't have reclaimed water. But the builder at that time put certain homes, yes, probably.
Probably an option.
And from personal experience, if you let that system sit for many years and then go to use it, you might end up having to rebuild it all anyway.
Yes.
Because they do deteriorate those systems.
I had leaks, and I rebuilt mine quite a few times.
Do you know if any of them are cooked wells?
I don't have a well, no.
Or any of the others, I mean. I mean, because that's an option.
I don't know if anybody else has a well.
That's an option even to your scenario, too.
Well, when I moved, when I bought the property, the gentleman had a well. And it worked for about a year and a half. And then for some reason, it stopped working, and I didn't want to deal with it. So I, you know, just used the city water.
We cut it off.
Probably.
We filled it.
I have a couple of questions that are really kind of irrelevant. And Bruce and I had similar discussions and kind of went over some of the scenarios that you talked about. And no matter how you kind of, as to Councilmember Beaverland's point, you know, making assumptions, you know, in certain things, one bad assumption can throw the whole thing off. But I don't know that that's the case in this. And it didn't appear like there are any real assumptions, either high or low, that you could do that even brought it close to making sense. And Bruce had said, you know, if you ran a trunk line down Oakleaf, would that make sense? And it doesn't because you put it in, but nobody's connected to it, and it doesn't generate any revenue. So it's even probably worse. Two questions, and I think we've discussed this before. But did we determine that we have the ability to service our existing customers and them if they were able to do that? I can't remember what the answer was to that, depending...
We do.
Okay, the capacity. And then the 3,000, you had said it works out to about 10,000 a home versus 3,000. Was the 3,000 just a quick calculation? Because like in my neighborhood, the builder put it in, so it wasn't even a city cost.
Yeah, that was the, those are the assets on the books.
Okay.
Okay, for the water and wastewater system. Yes, it was just a reference point.
Okay, all right, thanks.
And it certainly wasn't something you would make a decision.
No, no, I just was curious because I know we have 250 homes, and the builder was made. And I think Wellington Estates and all the Tuscany, they're all, that's part of their deal. They got to put them in, so. Okay, I don't have any. What are you looking for from us tonight?
No, I'm not expecting that the, I did not expect the council to vote on anything this evening. It was on the agenda as the presentation, which Mr. Thomas has provided. Just kind of what I, the way I, the bottom line of the report, so to speak, is that, and we asked them to do Harbor Palms and Country Club because in the capital improvement program, Country Club is out there in a further year. It seems to make sense just to have them do them both at the same time and not ask them to come back and do another one, you know, two years from now or something. But I was looking primarily at Harbor Palms because you do have some decisions related to that project in the very near future. So I'm looking at Harbor Palms and, well, Mr. Thomas, one of the scenarios he provided was a 75% participation rate, which I don't think we'd ever get to. So and looking at those other two, in both cases, Alternative 1 and 2, we're losing over $100,000 a year. So I did read the entire report, but I didn't leave a lot more details after that. So that's kind of, you know, how I arrived at the conclusion this would not be a good investment. So what does that mean? My recommendation to council is that going forward, we delete reclaimed water from the Harbor Palms Improvement Project. We will still do the potable water, which is the most important. Some sanitary sewer work, stormwater, curb and gutter, streets and sidewalks. Reclaimed will not be part of the project going forward. So when other things come to you in the near future, perhaps as early as the next meeting, there'll be, you know, something related to Harbor Palms. It could be an engineering agreement, whatever it might be. It's not going to include reclaimed water.
That's great. I mean, I think this is a great exercise because in case going down the road, we get asked by residents, you know, about reclaimed water. We've done our homework, or you've done our homework for us to determine that it just financially doesn't make sense. So I thank you if nobody else has any questions, Henry. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to say that Mr. Beaverland's almost always on point, if not always on point. I had an opportunity to listen to Daniel Shore, the great news broadcaster, make a speech a number of years ago. And he said, beware of statisticians and statistics. At the turn of the century, this transportation planner projected that New York City, at its current rate of growth, would be knee-deep in horse manure if they continued to grow. And of course, the car came along. So it's real important to think about those assumptions. One of the things we, reclaimed water is a good thing, okay? So what we didn't want to do was use two pessimistic assumptions and just discard the economics of it. And that's why we did provide alternative assumptions. And in each case, they were actually more optimistic than I think probably the reality would be. And the idea was to see, can we make it work if things really worked out well? And it still didn't seem to work, so.
Well, and to that point, and I know Jerry would agree with me, but, and my neighbor that was just sitting in the back as a traffic engineer, as I did engineering as well, and Jerry will agree with me on this, is, you know, assumptions are great. And I think in this particular case, it was a very fair and, you know, fairly looked at thing. But, you know, traffic studies are another scenario that the assumptions are, my assumption is you're paying me or you're paying me, is to, you know, which...
The answer is.
What the answer is. So I definitely agree that...
Whoever it is, the answer is yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Who's signing the check?
I did have one question, just because I'm really curious. When I read the report that there are 13 irrigation well, or meters out there, is that running from a well? Do you know?
The city, the city...
Those are meters that are connected to the city system, and they're not charged sewer on what goes through that meter.
Got it. Thank you. That's it.
And of course, they do have to pay for an additional meter and all that to get that. When Harbor Palms was...
I was curious about that, that that is an option, that they could, they wouldn't pay the sewer, but they would just pay for the raw water, correct?
It is. I mean, what I also found interesting about that was, before any of this analysis was done, with the staff, I think I predicted there would be six irrigation customers out there.
Till you were wrong.
Yeah, I was.
You were at about 50%, aren't you?
Yeah, but that's out of 483 homes. So there are some people that irrigate, and that's fine. And they can continue to do that with the current service. But that's a pretty low number out of 483.
Is that still an option for Rich?
It is.
And what's roughly, what's the cost, what's the cost to do that?
That doesn't mean they don't irrigate.
Right.
It just means...
That's correct, yes.
Right.
They haven't split the meters off.
Right.
Palm was built, it was built on a master meter.
Yeah.
And they finally had to take the master meter out because there was so much confusion out there with...
Yeah.
Who was stealing water, who wasn't stealing water.
Roughly, what's the cost to do that, to split the meter?
Cost of a meter installation?
$500 bucks or less?
Not even.
Anyone in the audience might know.
Huh?
$280. $280.
So that's even, almost maybe a better, you know, an alternative to, you know, one of your scenarios.
Well, they ran reclaimed down in the medians on Oakleaf, correct?
That's right.
It is there.
There's a line to irrigate the medians.
Yeah, that's interesting. And to your point, to your point, that could generate revenue if it was a grant program to do that. And because then they would be using water. At some rate, so.
Even on the master meter, they're going to water their lawns.
Yeah, yeah, okay. No, I'm talking about a meter at somebody's individual house where they could break, break it off and not pay sewer on it.
Right.
You'd have two, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, item nine, adopt Resolution 201708 supporting the designation of State Road 580 in Pinellas County as Senator Gerald S. Jerry Rem Highway. I'll read the resolution by title only. This is Resolution 201708, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Oldsmar, Florida, expressing support for the designation of that portion of State Road 580 in the City of Oldsmar as the Senator Gerald S. Jerry Rem Highway. That's the reading of Resolution 201708 by title only. I recommend its adoption. This came to us from Pinellas County. And I can share a lot more history about Mr. Rem if you would like for me to do that. He is deceased just briefly. He served in local government in various capacities over 20 or 30 years. Started as a city commissioner in Dunedin, served as mayor of the City of Dunedin, served in both the Senate and the House of Representatives in the Florida Legislature. He was a big transportation advocate. And even after he left office, I did know him, by the way, in the mid 80s, he was a big proponent of widening State Road 580 all the way from its western terminus in Dunedin and actually on into Hillsborough County. This applies to the Pinellas County portion of State Road 580. There's no cost to the city. It's not changing the name. What, if it's approved, it results in DOT putting some of those official signs up, designating this highway. It's named for Senator Rem.
And Dunedin already did it, adopted a resolution, and Pinellas County adopted it today.
The Jerry's program is nobody would listen to him on the road systems.
It took a while. But yes, we included Dunedin's resolution in the packet. They've already adopted it. Mayor gave us an update on Pinellas County.
What are the others that would require Clearwater Safety Harbor and, who else?
Well, there's four cities, Dunedin, Clearwater Safety Harbor, and us, and Pinellas County.
Right. So if we did, we'd be three of the, okay.
Any motion?
Yep.
So move?
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass is five, nothing.
Thank you. The next item, approve agreement with Public Financial Management Incorporated to provide financial advisory services to the city. Per the terms, conditions, and pricing, it's piggybacked on a City of Delray Beach contract. We have previously done business with Public Financial Management, the contract that we had expired some time ago. This is, as the council's aware, related to potential borrowing next year and the need for financial advisory services related to that. And they, they are, they're paid only if we actually do the borrowing. That's still is correct. So if you have any questions or comments, we'd be happy to respond to those. I do recommend your approval of the agreement with Public Financial Management Incorporated.
For the purpose of discussion, need a motion?
So move.
Second, any discussion on this? And you, I think you'd said, I might have, I was looking through my iPad, but we already anticipate that we're going to need their services. Is that correct?
Yes, we do anticipate borrowing funds for the Harbor Palms project and potentially maybe stormwater as well, or...
For the rates on the new contract, the same as they were in the previous one?
I don't know the answer to that.
In the new contract, the same rates as they were in the previous contract?
I, let me just get back to you. I, the reason we did that was because our, the little we had expired.
Right.
So we piggyback on another contract. I wish I could tell you, I'm not totally sure.
Probably not. I think the contract we had expired over a year ago or last year or sometimes. So it's not, it wasn't recent. This was, this Delray Beach contract was just approved in May of this year, so. See, did you, was there a motion already?
There's a motion in a second. I guess to that question, if it's far off from what we had previously had in the contract, I mean, I assume it's going to be somewhat close to what we had?
I would assume that if it was considerably higher,
Right.
we would have gone and negotiated to renew our old contract.
Is that a fair assumption that we would?
You know.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a huge gap, we would probably renegotiate it, I guess. I guess I'm fine with it, assuming that it's fairly in line with what we had before. Or if not better, so.
It would be in the cost of the borrow identified, but it would be relatively available to the eye.
Got it.
Right, okay.
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Everybody else, any questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five, nothing. Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
City Clerk?
No, nothing tonight.
Congratulations on your daughter?
Yep.
That's good. Another contributor. She could be our next city clerk, for all we know, huh?
I wonder how she got so inspired.
Because her mom said, get out and do something.
That's it.
Next is the City Council. We are going to scratch number 11, consider rescheduling the budget work session. All dates have been rectified, and we are good with the date that we had. I think it's the 11th, is that correct?
August 11. That's right.
Aug 11.
Ninety M eggs, bacon.
If you're bringing them. Next item, item 12, comments by council members. And we'll start with the historian, Mr. Beaverland. I have you down at four tonight. I could be wrong, though.
All for who you are.
Wow. Councilmember McGee?
The only thing I have is maybe say a prayer for me because it's Shark Week. And Friday, I took the day off from going down to Jupiter. I'm actually free diving with sharks, so I'm...
You are just...
With another council member, Dan Daly. Remember the younger council member, yeah? So we met at my first league conference when he was newly elected. He was only 22, probably the youngest council member I've ever met. And so I told him, I hope that they eat the annoying ones first.
Well, then it was nice knowing you.
But yeah, so we're doing it with Florida shark, Florida shark diving. And they were also just recently featured on National Geographic or Discovery Channel. Like, the first day of Shark Week, they were part of the Hammerhead Invasion. So it was pretty kind of neat to see that. But many people have done it and survived, so I think I'll...
Many people have done it and not survived. Just thought I would throw that in.
That's all I have, thanks.
Yeah, yeah, so hopefully you don't find those pork chops I stuffed in your wetsuit. Nothing else? Councilmember, Vice Mayor, how about that?
Thank you, Mayor. All I want to say is congratulations to Ann's daughter, and I don't really have anything else. I have nothing.
Councilmember Sidell?
Pressure's on now.
Yeah.
Let me get my list out, Mr. Mayor. I did have a question. Do we have any kind of update on what's going on over at Park Avenue?
606.
606.
I can give you an update.
If you could.
I had an update this morning.
The two parties met about, well, actually, it was two weeks ago today. And that session was mediated by deputies Kakalo and Martinez. And all parties attended and participated. And I think that opened up some lines of communication that had kind of deteriorated over time. And indicated a willingness to live with each other. But that was as of two weeks ago.
And I had, I got an update this morning and another update this afternoon. And to Bruce's point, as of today even, things are going well. I think there's even been some exchange of truck repair questions. I don't know which party was asking who, but that they have, you know, actually had dialogue. I think there's still an issue with the fence that the owner was going to rectify and the dogs. I think that it still needs to be rectified, but the owner indicated that he is, you know, he knows that it needs to be done and they're working through it. But everything I heard, it's, it's 180 degrees from what it was before. I mean, I think it was acknowledged, you know, at the meeting, and this is no secret, that, you know, there was kind of a Hatfield and a McCoy. And, and, you know, so they, I think it was nice. And that, I thank the Sheriff's Department for really pulling that together because I don't think they realized how big of an issue that had become in the community and who had been involved. So thanks to the Sheriff's Department for orchestrating that. And, you know, I think when you can get all the players involved, not only the homeowner, but the tenants and the landlord of the other and, you know, have dialogue, I think, I think it went well. So that's as of this afternoon even, that they're, they're fine and everything is going well, so.
Well, I just hope that, I think it's smart for us to continue to follow up on it, specifically to continue to put pressure on the landlord. And see that they, you know, are accountable. I am going to be at the Florida League of Cities.
Awesome.
Going to go.
Pyramid, pyramid.
Pyramid, yeah. Great, Jerry.
The two of you are going on Wednesday? Going to be there Wednesday?
I'll be there Thursday to Saturday.
You looking at me?
You, and you, yes.
I will not be there for the morning class, but I will be there for the mayor's roundtable in the afternoon on Wednesday.
And you're going?
Wednesday.
Don't tell everybody I said hi.
We will. Hugs from Jerry.
Wish I'll get Jerry Beaverland shirts somewhere.
Okay, I'm probably not going to go until Thursday because of an announcement that's getting made. And I want to be there. Jack's announcement.
Oh, is that Wednesday?
It's Wednesday.
Okay.
And so...
Where's he doing it at?
It's confidential.
It's the worst kept secret. He's been on every TV show talking about...
No, the location.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I get that.
I'll tell you after the meeting.
Yeah, he's, he's been...
But I'll go and I'll represent if nobody else is going to be able to do it.
Yeah, I think I might be able to be there.
Yeah, that's good, yeah. Yeah, I might run, but he's been on 14 different TV stations talking about it, so.
Yeah. I wanted to once again thank Tom and Dean for the work that they did.
Absolutely.
On the search for new city manager. I think the process went very fair, very equitable. We did a good search. There were some very good candidates that were put before us. We all unanimously obviously agreed that there was only one candidate that was the right one. And so congratulations again, Al, well deserved. And we expect you to be Bruce Haddock 2.0.
And I hope that doesn't offend you. I thought about that today. I'm like, I hope you don't, no, I think it's a...
It's going to be pretty hard to offend me at this point.